Branch. Please, excuse me, please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Our most kind and loving heavenly Father, we lift up this council and these leaders of our community before thee that they might serve thee, Lord, as they serve the citizens of this great city. Be ever mindful of the needs within. Guide, direct, and protect us is my prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. Thank you very much. That brings us to citizens' request. This is Bo Kircoff. Well, we need a motion for non-residents to speak, so do we have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the first to speak tonight is Bo Kircoff. Bo, please come forward, state your name, and then please state your address. And you are a non-resident, so and you have five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Bo Kircoff. I live at 15902 Megan Street, Belton, Missouri. Good evening, my name's Bo Kircoff. I come to you tonight as a last resort to present documented evidence and medical reports and ask for your help with the Independence Police Department. Nothing I say tonight is hearsay or my interpretation of the events that took place. On May 3rd, 2024, we were blessed with our first grandbaby, Remington James Amua. He was a little underweight but overall healthy. He was released from the hospital into his mother and her new boyfriend's care on May 6th, 2024. June 18th, our lives changed forever. We received a call, we received a call that Remy was taken to Children's Mercy with life-threatening injuries and nobody could tell us if he was going to make it. When the paramedics arrived at Executive Inn Suites on East 40 Highway in Independence, Remy was unresponsive and had been for at least 15 minutes according to multiple police statements. The story the mother and her boyfriend told where they were in the shower together, they heard Remy crying for a while. When he stopped crying, they got out of the shower to check on him. At that time, they found that he wasn't breathing and was discolored. She then called her mother and argued with her for a minute or two and then told her what was going on. Her mother drove from Corner Cafe, Cornerstone, Corner Cafe, whatever that is, to the hotel, which according to GPS with no traffic was 12 minutes from the location she was at. Once her mother arrived, the mother had to convince her daughter to call 911. During that time, they waited on the paramedics to arrive. They went to a fellow hotel resident and had them perform CPR on a six-week-old baby. Once paramedics and police arrived, not a single officer took the time to question the mother or boyfriend. Take the person's information who performed CPR on an infant or even take pictures of the scene. The officer's body cam footage, which we have seen all of, shows the mother playing with her two-year-old, having a good time, while you can hear a paramedic saying, "He's gone." The same body cam footage shows the mother in her PJs with dry hair and her boyfriend as dirty as can be, therefore proving the statement that they were in the shower was a lie. Once the mid ended in Children's Mercy, Remy was put on life support while doctors rushed multiple tests to figure out what happened. At that time, he weighed almost two pounds less than birth weight and was obviously malnourished. CT scans determined he had multiple broken ribs in different stages of healing, proving this wasn't a one-time event. Medical scans also found he had a fractured skull and multiple other conditions consistent with the abuse. Medical reports clearly state the abuse was intentional and could not have been accidental. Family, family support division investigation concluded the injuries were purposeful instead of accidental. When the medical staff informed the mother they were calling DFS about what they discovered with the broken ribs, she and her boyfriend signed up for a couples massage through the Ronald McDonald House, had their massage, and for the next four weeks, they never came back to the hospital. He laid in a bed for four weeks without his mother there. Now as to why we're here, it's been 363 days since my grandson was admitted into the hospital with life-threatening injuries and not a single charge has been filed, not neglect, abuse, abandonment, attempted murder, nothing. Since being released into our care through multiple neurologist visits and specialists, my grandson has been diagnosed with cerebral palsy from blunt force trauma. He will have to deal with the side effects of his condition his entire life. He does not have proper use of his left hand like the rest of us. He's not able to crawl or hold a walker or even properly hold his own bottle, and the monsters who are responsible have not seen a single minute in jail. We've tried hundreds and hundreds of times to get in contact with the detective handling the case to find out what's going on with no response. At this point, as soon as I say my name to dispatch, they transfer me to her boss, who never returns my calls. We have emailed, we have called, we have shown up, nothing. We have even called the mayor's office and left multiple messages. At one point, there was a witness who had a video of the boyfriend saying what he did. She took it to the police station and was sent away because it was a Saturday and nobody could take her report.
You have one minute.
Oh, okay. By the time the detective did reach out to her, she had been threatened with losing her housing if she came forward because her landlord was the boyfriend's dad. We sent screenshots of that to the detectives and again, nothing. By law, that's witness tampering and charges should have been filed. In the months since my grandson's abuse, the mother's boyfriend has assaulted two different females, been to jail, and had both times the charges been dropped. To conclude, my grandson was almost killed. There's over 5,000 pages of medical records with the words intentional abuse written all over him. There are DFS reports saying the same. There's police reports that were very well rehearsed that don't match up to the body cam footage. And all we have gotten as an explanation is, since there were four adults living in a hotel room, we don't know who did it, so we can't charge any of them. That's not good enough for us. I brought a few pictures with me today. I know you all can't really see them. The first is of my grandson perfectly healthy the day he was born. This is a picture of him at two weeks old with a black eye, two weeks old, black eye. Three weeks old with a knot the size of a baseball on his head. I'm more than happy to bring these up to you. Three weeks old with a fat lip. Anybody who has kids knows that a two- and three-week-old cannot do this to themselves. This is what he looked like the day he was admitted to the hospital. Nothing has been done. We can't get a call back from the detective, we can't get a call back from the chief, we can't get a call on anything. It's unreal. All we're asking for is justice. We've taken the police statements and medical reports and body cam footage and DFS reports to multiple other prosecutors' offices and local police jurisdictions to get guidance.
I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Your time has in fact expired. I'll be happy to spend as much time this evening with you when the meeting's over, if you want to stay that long.
Yes, sir.
Or we can take time tomorrow to meet.
As long as I need to say.
I'll be happy to meet with you personally and to have that discussion, but the time has expired and be respectful to the speakers.
Yes, sir.
We've got to be respectful of that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Lucy Young. Lucy, please come forward. You've got five minutes and please state your name and address, please.
Before we start, I'd like to say to your family, God bless you, and I hope that you get the solution that you need. It's justified.
Thank you.
Lucy, and this seems trivial after that, so I apologize. Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri, 64057. I appreciate a phone call that I had received from a council member. We had a very long discussion on things that I thought were wrong with the budget, and he was very receptive. As far as the homeless coordinator, I feel it should be placed under arch. I don't think it has a place in the police department. Codes and demolition, you were all very aware of that. It was on the first cover sheet. It was a presentation on the next following study session. And you had, one of you had said, "You understand the need, but you didn't have the luxury. You had to direct it towards public safety," and I thank you for that statement. Sorry, that kind of shook me up. The, I served on the Geo Bond Committee, and we talked about the need of Police Central Building. That need's still here. We can't move the jail. It's going to have to stay in existence. So why not dedicate $400,000 of the marijuana tax to fixing, to make that part of the central building livable until we can come up with a viable solution? Our officers are going to be stuck in that building to who knows when or if they'll ever be able to move. So why don't we find a solution with the marijuana tax in-house instead? Another one is the IPL Risk Manager. IPL just won an APPA Diamond Safety Award for the third consecutive year in a row, the first time in IPL history. At the June 9th, 2025 study session, your insurance workers' compensation renewal presentation showed a policy with surcharges of $1.5 million for regular employees and $2 million for the fire department, police department, and IPL, the most dangerous jobs in the city. Leave the utilities' risk manager in place and hire one for the city. They have different needs, but need one overall manager, like there used to be years ago, and I'm not sure why that position was eliminated. Also, it wasn't discussed. Are utility funds going to be paying for this? There was no discussion on the source of where the funding was coming from, but we were told we shouldn't punish other departments because they can't afford one. So why should the utility ratepayers pay for it out of designated fund budget? At the March 17th, 2025 meeting, the council approved a budget for the new Independence Municipal Commons. In there, hidden in one of the budget charts, excuse me, not hidden, because I found it, so it must have not been hidden. IPL was charged $425,000 to redo the customer service reception area. So I asked the city manager about it, and he said the utilities would share the cost. Well, if you look at your ordinance tonight, that was related to the budget, it has a breakdown where IPL is going to be charged $500,000, but water and sewer are only going to pay $250,000 apiece. And every one of the utilities uses the same utility bill, the same CSR, answer the phones, and when you do the drive-through, there's no breakdown. It's all, it should be divided in thirds, not half and then half again. During the charter change, we were told that IPL would not be affected by taking out the language, "There should be, shall be a utility." Well, apparently it has because IPL is looking like a cash cow right now. Stormwater tax, $40,000 for CSL. I met with the group when I was on council that organized the stormwater sales tax. The city told them they couldn't get it passed, but that didn't stop that group of people from going forward. They never once discussed picking up trash on the side of the streets. Instead, that tax paid for two street sweepers. Now, I understand that it's been hard to keep drivers filled in that position, but perhaps this tax would be better used if you would fund those two street drivers, street sweeper drivers positions instead so that we can keep it. And here's the reason why. In the 2016-17 budget, it stated that 723 miles were swept by Public Works, and they removed 813 cubic yards of debris. But in the 2014-15 budget, 3,098 miles were swept, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, with 1,600...
You've, you're at five minutes.
Okay.
Ms. Young.
I'd like to caution you because last week you allowed someone to speak longer than the five minutes. Read Section 20. It says in the ordinance that "All ordinances conflicted herewith are hereby repealed." That means when you vote to approve the budget, you could be changing ballot language. We watched that in Jeff City recently, and people were not happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Dominic.
Laura Dominic, 3525 Blue Ridge Boulevard. Good evening, council. First, I want to thank you. I watched last week's study session without a single issue. I could hear everything, I could see all the presentations. I really, really appreciate the work that you did on that. Thank you. As I emailed you last night, and I know it was late, I have a serious concern about moving the FTE for an IPL Risk Manager to a citywide FTE Risk Management, Manager, excuse me. I volunteer with the Disaster Response Team at Heart-to-Heart International. In October of 2019, 2022, and 2023, I served with the DRT providing onsite medical assistance for the International Lyman's Rodeo that's held in Bonner Springs. We worked in conjunction with the ILR Safety Committee and got to see firsthand the unique risks that Lyman face and the requisite emphasis put on safety. Every day, our Lyman work with power lines that carry up to tens of thousands of volts of electricity. Just for reference, an AED only stores approximately 2,000 volts to push those jewels through, to your heart when it is beating irregularly to stop it. Our Lyman get called to work in the middle of the night when a transformer blows or a car wrecks into a power pole. They work in frigid temperatures around the clock after ice storms. One wrong move can lead to severe injury or death. Safety just has to be top of mind every minute of every day. As I mentioned, a risk manager for an electric utility handles safety issues that are unique to that industry and require a full-time employee's attention. A utility risk manager has to implement current safety standards and equipment while staying abreast of new standards and equipment. They must design and implement on-the-job training, which is training that no other city department provides. All of those things require supporting SOPs that the risk manager has to write and revise when necessary. A risk manager who has to learn about and address the risks involved with all of the individual city departments cannot possibly focus the amount of time necessary to ensure adequate safety of our utility workers. As was mentioned in the council meeting when IPL was recognized for receiving the National Diamond Level Award for the past three years from the American Public Safety Power Association, we take pride in owning our utilities, and over 60,000 customers rely on the work of our Lyman every day to keep the lights on. By moving the risk manager out of IPL, we won't receive that level of award in the future, and I personally think that's a trend we should aspire to. I think we should all, I think we can all agree that we owe our Lyman, at the minimum, the absolute best practices of safety. With that, I again urge you to let the FTE remain with IPL to reduce the risk of major injury or of death to our Lyman. Let's give them the undivided attention they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mike Johann. And please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Mike Johann. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I reside at 2617 Stone Ridge, Independence, Missouri. Let me begin by telling you just a little bit about myself for those who don't know me. I was born and raised in the city of Independence, have lived here all my life. I've raised my children here. My grandchildren live here. They all bought, my children bought houses, my grandchildren live here, brothers, sisters, nieces, nephews, lots of family and friends living in Independence. I love the city of Independence. The city's been good to me. This is where I made my life and career. I worked at the police department for approximately 35 years. After I retired, I stayed on as a reserve officer, worked security here at municipal court and the city council. My last 20 years before I retired, I was a detective. I worked over 125, worked on over 125 homicide cases and thousands of other cases. During the course of my career, I would occasionally be assigned a case where I knew either the victim or the suspect. I would immediately have that case reassigned to a different investigator. I did that because if I investigated that case, that would be a conflict of interest and totally unethical for me to investigate because of biases. Based on what I just told you about myself, I just want to say I'm totally disappointed and totally embarrassed about what I've been watching on TV about what's going on at the police department. I put my life in here at the police department. This is embarrassing. I'm sure you, the council, I'm sure you're embarrassed about what's going on. I've been reading social media, all the comments, majority of the comments are totally negative about the police department. People that I socialize with ask me, "What's going on in that mess over there?" And I tell them, "I don't know. I don't work there no more." But I do know this, it's got to be fixed. I have information there's an Internal Affairs investigation going on with the chief. I'm not here to judge the chief. I have no information about what may or may not have occurred. But I do know this, based on my investigative experience, no investigation should be done by its own department. This should be done by an outside agency such as the Missouri Highway Patrol. No subordinate should be investigating their own boss. I think it's an outrage you'd even put an officer in that position to investigate his own boss. In fact, I don't even believe it's fair that the chief would be investigated by his subordinates. I don't think he's getting a fair shake either. I think it needs to go to the Highway Patrol. And I know the Justice Center bond failed here a few months ago, and I believe you might want to put it back in front of the voters. If you ever want to pass that bond issue, you need to win back the trust of the voters. Because I believe based on what's going on, I don't think the vast majority of the voters trust you anymore. You talk about transparency, then prove it and have an outside agency conduct the investigation because currently what you're, what you are doing is totally a conflict of interest, and I believe is totally unethical. You, the council, need to take charge of this. This, this city's getting a black eye from all this. You need to take charge and have an outside agency investigate that. Secondly, I also want to talk about all the lawsuits that have been filed by the police officers against the city. During my 40-year career here, I only know of one or two lawsuits in 40 years. You've had about 15 lawsuits filed in the last two years. Matter of fact, I just saw on the news again, one was filed in federal court just a couple days ago. Based on conversations I had with other people that I know that still work the police department, there's more coming, folks. There's a lot more lawsuits coming. This is costing the taxpayers millions of dollars. I know insurance is going to pay for some of this, but I do not believe you have enough insurance to cover all this. I'm not even sure who will insure you next year. Your premiums, if you do find somebody, it's going to be outrageous.
You have one minute.
It's costing us taxpayers a lot of money that could be more wisely spent. Once again, the majority of the voters will not pass a bond issue for the Justice Center based on millions of dollars being paid out in settlements to police officers. Why would anyone want to vote to raise their taxes when we're giving out millions of dollars in settlements? You all need to get your house in order. This is a failure of leadership. I don't know if it starts here at City Hall or if it starts at the police department, but this reflects on you, the city council, and you know that. Once again, you, the city council, need to take charge of this situation, hire an outside consultant, and have them investigate what the problem is that's causing all these lawsuits so you can put a stop to this insanity. You, the council, needs to earn back the trust of the voters and be transparent about the findings of the consultant. Please have a conversation about what I just talked about and take action. I urge you, because I poured my life into this city, and I want this city to be the best it can be, and right now, it's not. Thank you.
Next up is Becky Haake. And Becky, please come up, and you've got five minutes.
My name is Becky Haake, 10516 East 26. I'm here tonight to talk about the TIF that we're retiring. Kind of confused on a few things. It started in '79, then it was approved, the work was approved in 2000. But we, collecting it in 2000, any of the TIFs and taxes and eats and pilot fees in '23?
A second, yeah. Please stay close to the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll start over. It was started and voted on in '97. And it was approved, the work plan was approved in 2000. It expired in '23. We're just now retiring it? I'm not sure what happened in this last two years. And for anyone that doesn't know, I'm talking about the Santa Fe TIF. And it's on Nolan Road, like from Gudgel down to 23rd Street area. Anybody that remembers Winstead's, High, Highboy, Pizza Hut, Chez, Checkers? Checkers, all that was right there? It's all gone. We had a TIF that was supposed to improve that area to put in a grocery store, to put in a senior family, excuse me, senior apartment living. It's all gone. We now have the entryways where the businesses used to be. We have the broke-up concrete that's got weeds growing through it. We did buy, at some point in time, the Autozone was built in there, but it's vacant. That's where the Highboys used to be. And I understand this is a super TIF. It means we're on the hook for all this money. And like it says here in the agenda tonight, it's not going to be paid off till 2044 or 2045 fiscal year. We have already paid, according to the records that were filed with the state as of June 21st, 2019, or 2023. We've already paid on principal, interest, and outstanding debt over 15 million. In that year alone, we paid $530,000. You know what we could have do with this extra money every year? Our streets, our parks? This isn't our only super TIF we're paying on, and as I understand it, Cracker Nick is still not going to be paid off to 2044 also. That's 5.5 million a year, according to these reports we're putting in. So we're paying $6 million on these TIFs. And I granted, I know most of them aren't super TIFs, but a lot of these TIFs are not paying off. I don't understand why we keep giving them out for apartments and other things. This one took a perfectly good, say, few blocks of Nolan Road that had businesses that were thriving, that were paying taxes, and we have nothing. I understand Douthat Lake had problems with environmental issues, but didn't we know there was environmental issues before we said we were going to do this? Now it's a six-to-eight-foot chain-link fence with all kinds of hazard notices on it and high grass between, behind it. I just think we really need to think these plans out and where we're going to spend our money and where we're spending money just to pay off these debts on things that don't pay off, and we really need to think these through before we start doing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Wes Epperson. And Wes, you'll have five minutes, and please state your name and address.
Yeah, the name is Wes Epperson. I live at 3600 Poplar Avenue in southwest Independence. I've been an independent resident, born here, lived here virtually all my life. I've participated in most of the independence elections. I've also voted in favor of every sales tax proposal. And rethinking my votes on this, especially the vote to make these sales tax permanent, I'm having second thoughts about that because we really have no recourse now, whether we like the way the funds are being spent or not. And I want to just focus in on the Park Improvement Sales Tax Fund. I look at this year's budget proposal on page 60, I believe, Schedule 7, and it lists the proposed budget for the Park Improvement Sales Tax Fund. And they project that the total of revenues for that fund is a little over $6 million, $6,8,600 to be exact. And when you go down to expenditures, I see total expenditures is a little over $7 million. I also noticed that the salary benefits, retiree health insurance, operating expenses, equipment, that comes to $6,341,712. When I look at the next line, capital improvements... When I look at the next line, capital improvements, there's nothing there. There's nothing left for capital improvements. It's, a lot of the money's being spent on salaries and benefits. And I'm not against salaries and benefits. I'm a wage earner. I worked over 40 years, got paid by the hour. So I'm not here to speak against anybody that's working for the Parks Department. My, the point I want to make is this. I went back 10 years ago, and I looked at the Parks and Recs Authorized Positions for All Funds. That was on page 446 of that proposed budget. And 2014, '15, out of the General Fund, there was 27.10 full-time employees, and there was 26.11 coming out of the Sales Tax Fund. When you go to this year's budget on page 115, there's 82.73 full-time employees. And of that, 54.80 is paid out of the Sales Tax Fund, and 27.93 is out of the General Fund. If you look at those numbers from 10 years ago, they have flipped. And so we, you know, I read the Parks ballot language. It has no requirement, there's no percentage limit like there is in some of the funds in their ballot language, ordinance language. And the only thing I found in the Parks Tax
You have one minute.
Was, I think it required $1.7 million out of the General Fund each year to be spent on the Parks. So there's a lot of money coming into the Parks Fund from the Sales Tax. And we're basically, it looks to me like we're taking money out of the Sales Tax Fund to pay employees, so we free up more money in the General Fund for whatever projects or preferred things that we want to do in the city. And I'll say this, I regret my vote on voting for some of these Sales Taxes and making them permanent because I believe they're not being used the way they should be. I think they ought to, employees ought to be paid basically out of the General Fund, maybe a little bit out of the Sales Tax Fund, but that shouldn't be the prominent place. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent and agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I move to accept the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to accept the recommendations of the City Manager. Are there any items that want to be pulled for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Number seven, please.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Item three and item eight.
Thank you. Any other items for separate consideration? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda, and then we'll consider items three, seven, and eight separately. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Roland.
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, minus number three, seven, and eight. But the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. Councilmember Perkins, you are first. Item number seven is yours. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion for approval.
We've got a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Please proceed.
Thanks. Just a quick, just a comment. I'm glad this project's getting moving. This is a little over a million-dollar project over in the Barn House area, which is over off of Liberty Street by Big and Wagner State. So to you, Mr. City Manager, and also to Deputy City Manager, if you need help with conversations with the neighbors over there as that work goes through, more than happy to help out with that conversation. They can get a little uppity at times over there, and I appreciate that about them and happy to help with those conversations.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion on item number seven? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number seven.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Roland.
Yes. Item number seven passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number three. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I make a motion for approval.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve item number three. Councilmember, please proceed.
This question is for the City Manager. You know, we have multiple insurance opportunities here, so workman's comp, auto insurance, property insurance, liability insurance, and all of these have gone up. And can you speak to the general insurance climate for these, for other municipalities, please?
Yes. Generally, what we're seeing in the market is escalation in pricing. When I say generally, I mean, you know, across all entities. Specifically here in Independence, where we've got a little over 1,000 full-time employees, 12 different city departments operating, full-service city, very complex industries, very complex services that we provide, 24/7 operations. There are those issues that, you know, if you think about your own personal finances, your home auto umbrella policies, well, now multiply that over 1,000-plus people and all those different services. So, you know, in our conversations with our risk management consultant, you know, while we certainly strive to minimize these increases year over year, we find that in these areas, workers' comp, our property insurance, auto insurance, we're pretty well in the ballpark with peers' municipalities our size.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item number three? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number three.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Mayor Roland.
Yes. Item number three passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number eight. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First, I propose to make a motion for approval of item number eight.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Mr. City Manager, we certainly are seeing increases across the board in the cost of cement and asphalt and materials and supplies and chemicals. I just wanted to say thank you for working on having this be a multi-year contract so that we can try to adjust for some of these escalations that we're seeing. It has two additional one-year periods on this contract after approval for this one. Do we have any kind of ability to cost contain in those? Is there an escalation, or it's whatever the market will bear?
I'll answer that in two different ways, Councilmembers. So no specific price controls in the contract, but a couple of things that I would like to point out, practices that we are employing to try to contain expenses here at the city. One is this is a vendor that we have previously employed for this kind of work. We have been wildly impressed and pleased with the quality of craftsmanship that we've received from this vendor. So when their work is done, rarely can I think of a time when we've had to ask for that work to be redone because of poor craftsmanship, quality of work. This is a local vendor, lives right here in town, business here in town. We've been very, very pleased with the responsiveness and quality of work we've gotten there. With the merger over several fiscal years of different city departments into what now constitutes municipal services, we have better planning and cross-communications across what was once multiple departments. So if we know we're going to be repaving or reconstructing a street, or we know that we're going to be replacing a water, sewer, or stormwater infrastructure, there is better communication to plan and prepare for that so that we don't overlay a street and then, you know, a few weeks later, we're in there cutting that street up to put down new waterline. And then the last thing I'll add is just the, well, I've been really pleased and impressed with our right-of-way enforcement and our construction inspectors and municipal services, especially in the last several years. The standard to which they are holding particularly private contractors who are doing utility work, cable, gas, et cetera, across the community, oftentimes, you know, mandating and requiring that curb-to-curb replacement instead of the patched work quilt-like look down a street. So there's a lot of different ways that I think we have elevated and upped our game to ensure the lifecycle of our street infrastructure lasts longer. So nothing specific in that contract, but would be remiss if I didn't highlight some of those other practices that we've employed.
Thank you.
Anyone else have other discussion on item number eight? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Roland.
Yes. Item number eight passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to the regular agenda, and we've got a public hearing for new information only. So we'll open the public hearing.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 11601 East US 24 Highway from R6 Single Family Residential to R30 PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development and to approve a preliminary development plan. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This particular PUD was considered by Planning Commission on April 29th of this year. Planning Commission did approve this PUD for recommendation. This is a property along US 24 Highway. It used to be a motel travel lodge for many, many years. It's distinctly 15 small house structures. The applicant wishes to use these for permanent residential and therefore requiring an R30 PUD rezoning. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed on the second reading.
25-041, second reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District R6 Single Family Residential to District R30 PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 11601 East US 24 Highway. Second reading.
Any discussion on 25-041? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for people watching, this doesn't change. It's not a building change. It's more a correction zoning for the way that these are being operated. Is that a fair?
Yes.
Okay.
That is accurate.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on 25-041? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Roland.
Yes. 25-041 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to another public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the special use permit application to operate a tattoo shop at 18801 East 39th Street, number D09D. New information only.
Thank you again. This special use permit was also considered by Planning Commission on April 29th. Planning Commission didn't recommend this. This is a special use permit for a body arts or a tattoo shop inside the Independence Center Mall. It's on the first floor. That's really all I have to offer.
Thank you.
No new information. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-042, second reading. An ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a body art establishment at 18801 East 39th Street in Independence, Missouri. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 24-042?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just a question. I don't know if Mr. Rural or City Manager, or either one, is there, do we have per capita limits on these facilities or not? Or?
Yes, we do. We have, basically, it's eight that we can have in total. I believe with this one, we'll have six. We generally get to like six, sevens. We've never really had eight for a long time, and then some will close, and so that's why we'll have eight or six with this particular one.
So this would be six?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else have other further discussion on 25-042? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Roland.
Yes. 25-042 passes seven in favor and zero opposed. So that brings us to a full public hearing. So, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the formation of the Pavilions at Hartman Heritage Community Improvement District, full public hearing. 25-043, first reading. An ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of the Pavilions at Hartman Heritage Community Improvement District, establishing the district, making findings, and authorizing actions related to establishment of the district. First reading.
We'll officially open the public hearing, and please proceed.
Good evening. David Martin with Gilmore &amp; Bell. We serve as Bond and Economic Development Council to the city. This public hearing relates to the establishment of a new CID referred to as the Pavilions at Hartman Heritage. If you're familiar with the Hartman Heritage Development, it spans the north and south sides of Jackson Drive and encompasses a number of buildings that are part of a development from a number of years ago on either side of that road. This relates to just the strip center buildings on the north side, and it involves the imposition of a new, if approved, 1% sales tax on retailers that will be operating within those buildings. The purpose of that tax is to provide for funding mechanism for private improvements, in this case, based on a blight finding, and in order to remediate that blight within the district. I have a number of exhibits that have been submitted to the City Clerk and that I would like to offer onto the record. This is the petition itself, the blight study, the mailed notice that was sent out on May 27th of 2025, and the proof of publication in the Examiner. Publication was made on June 3rd and June 10th, and then the four-day notice that was posted under 672725 that was posted on the city's website in advance of the meeting. I will be around for questions at the end of the developer's presentation, but at this point, I'd like to introduce Kurt Peterson, who is the attorney for the developer. He is going to explain the nature and need for this request.
Thank you, David. Thanks a lot. Mayor, good evening, members of the council. My name is Kurt Peterson, 900 West 48th Place, Kansas City, Missouri, here on behalf of HC Independence LLC, which is the owner of the Hartman Heritage Shopping Center that David was speaking of. To be really clear, that's the entity that owns it, but the developer that you might recognize that owns that entity is Highland Capital. And I have Justin Dormand just to my left, who's the Vice President at Highland, here tonight as well. So I always like to be brief and to the point and tell you where I'm going to go. So there's just a handful of topics, very briefly, on who this developer is that would like to make this investment in the city. The project site itself, which David did a job of highlighting, but we'll spend, you know, 20 seconds on that. Then we'll go to the CID blight, statutory blight findings and the blight report that's in your packet. Talk about the proposed public incentives, which again, consists of the CID sales tax. The sources and uses are really just the budget. What do we want to try to accomplish with this? And lastly, talk about what does this do for the bottom line of the city in terms of that this center thrives? What does it mean for sales tax for the city of Independence? So starting with the developer. Highland Capital is based in Nashville, Tennessee. They have extensive redevelopment and management experience in all sorts of retail centers. They've redeveloped actually nearly 100 properties in a number of different states that total about 10 million square feet. So the whole reason to tell you that is you don't have somebody that's coming to the city and has never done this before and is trying it out. They've done this many a times. I just put a few slides in so you could get a sense. This by no means tries to capture everything they've done, just pushing through these end. Now you have them in your packet. Give you a little sense of that. Next, moving to the project site itself, you can see the address on the screen. This is, as David said, I'll give you a different orientation if you're like me. This is the northwest quadrant of I-70 and Little Blue Parkway, which for me means it's west of Menards to get my brain on where we're talking about. This is, there's an aerial to give you a good sense. This is a total leasable square footage of about 215,000 square feet, and this is the big number. Right now, we have vacancy of 70%, so of that total strip center, about 150,000 feet of vacant space. The blight, CID blight that David referred to and I wanted to walk you through briefly is, again, I'm not going to go through every picture, but I really want to give you a sense of the conditions of the project right now. So of that 70% of the center, again, that is vacant, 95% of that is covered by what the CID statute would call blight. So just strolling through a few photos here, give you a sense. Across a number of both the big spaces and the small spaces. I'm going to pause on this one because, and again, I think most certainly the mayor, but maybe all of you get reports about this, but just in the last three to four months, there's been three separate incidents of crime, theft, property crime that's happened here. And the third time, I know we have several police officers here, apparently involved K-9 drone and a large number of police officers. Copper, all the electrical on a lot of the big units was destroyed, as were the HVAC units for many of these spaces. So again, didn't want to read every page of a blight study, but wanted to kind of get you in the mode of understanding the context that we have right now with this center. So the problem, the problem is this center right now is stuck in the downward cycle of what we see for many retail centers, not only in Independence, but all across the country, certainly all across the Kansas City metro where I practice. And yet, to secure what I call stabilizing tenants, oftentimes national or regional tenants, but not only, because we believe in also getting good local tenants, but certainly those strong regional and national tenants, it takes substantial, what the industry calls tenant improvements. They don't, they won't sign up just to go into space like that. They require that the landlord will do a lot of work at their cost, that is the landlord's cost, before they'll sign a lease. And yet, the rent, if the landlord does that, that they're willing to pay, doesn't justify doing that much work, so you get stuck. So this is why we see many shopping centers honestly dying. So the great news is the Missouri Legislature gave you a tool. I know all you are aware of this tool, but it's literally meant for something like this. It's the Community Improvement District tool. And what it allows, moving to the request, what it allows is the addition of a sales tax. It only applies in that little district, which you saw on the screen, this shopping center, and we would propose it'd be 1% for up to 27 years, or if we pay off sooner, we're done. We just need help with the improvements that we want to make. Developer, and this is key, you've seen this before, it's pay-as-you-go. Developer fronts all the money. There's zero risk on the city or the taxpayers. Developer has to put all the investment in, and if they perform, if they get good tenants that generate a lot of add-on sales tax, they'll get paid back over time gradually, again, up to 27 years. There's no city guarantee of anything, just the permission to charge this extra 1% on folks that shop at that shopping center. So I put the projections up here as we call it. I know it's kind of small font, but it runs out based on the taxable sales, based on the kind of tenants we would expect to get, what could be generated, and we call it today's dollars or net present value or NPV. You see that before, because that's how we, we have costs that would be today. What are the revenues in today's dollars, taking account all the interest from the borrowings we'd have to do? And that's, you can see, just over $9 million. You then take that and say, well, what does that look like in terms of applying to the project cost? Our estimate is overall, in addition to the cost of the center itself, tenant improvements of about $18 million, which all would have to be put out as tenants come in, and then reimbursement of a maximum, we would be capped at that $9.19 million plus interest, so again, today's dollars. The last piece I wanted to cover is one that, you know, cannot be ignored. I could stop there because that's what the developer needs to move forward, but I think it's important to also say if they are, if this is eventually approved and the tenant, tenants are able to be brought in with this tenant improvements, which the developer's confident of, we're talking massive rebirth of this center. They're very confident in that. And what would that do to the city's existing sales tax? And we ran that out for the center over the 27-year period, and it totals a gross amount of about $63 million in city sales tax, again, over 27 years. Or, to be fair, because I keep bringing it back to today's dollars, today's dollars, that'd be just under $25 million. So in conclusion, council, the classic win-win-win. I think it's a win for the public because they're going to get more options. We'll get national and regional and local retailers in here to provide more opportunities for citizens to shop and enjoy them. It's a win for the developer because they can actually rebirth this center with high-class tenants, and a win for the city because it avoids what, I don't want to overuse the word cancer, but it can, like, you know, it's a negative feedback loop. You know, this just goes down and down and frankly can spread beyond even the shopping center. So instead of that, we avoid, you know, the crime that we've seen just in the last three months, and we help secure lots of additional sales tax for the city. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions you have at any time. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you. These are things you've mentioned. I'm going to reiterate them so I make sure that I'm capturing them correctly. This is an area, probably the number one complaint I get from citizens is empty storefronts. They said it makes them worry about their city. They hate the fact that it doesn't generate any tax revenue. They see it as ugly with these kind of hulking empty spaces. So I appreciate that we're finding a way to move forward on that. I really do want to come back to the concerns that were brought up earlier about super TIFs. So in the super TIF, you know, the city is a partner to that and they hold debt. And so we have stopped that practice, and so do not offer those anymore where the city is on the hook at all. So let me just make sure, you make the improvements at your own cost. You hold them on your books.
Correct.
And if you bring in tenants who choose to shop there and spend that 1%, you get reimbursed. At no point is the city making investments in order for that to happen.
All that is accurate.
Okay. And you have the option to prepay yourselves if the TIF performs the way that you're hoping that it will.
And it's a, I know you know this, but just because people are listening, instead of TIF, in this case, it's a Community Improvement District.
Oh, CID, excuse me.
No, you're right. Yeah.
Yes.
1% CID. Right. That is simply, we're providing the financing and we either get paid back over time or we don't based on sales. Exactly what, you said it right.
And so how many tenants do you anticipate you'd be able to bring in to those 215,000 square feet?
So the great news is, and I know you all appreciate this, we could start going through names, but it's literally dollars and cents that are the gap. So there are, not, I won't exaggerate, there are four to five that are at LOI stage, that it just doesn't make sense, and this makes it make sense. So at least four to five out of the gate, and we were just actually sitting in the back talking about this. You start doing that, it's the positive feedback loop. You just start being able to lease the rest of the space, and we'll have the CID sales tax dollars to the tenant improvement. So four to five right now, but we're really confident that, give us a few more months, a year, and we'll start to get it all filled up again.
And timeframe for that, people moving in?
I say immediate, but this is what I mean by immediate. So LOIs, by the time you sign the lease, you know, there's legal and lawyer things that, I mean, on average, by the time you get a signed lease, let's call it, some of those 30 to 45 days after this body, if it would, would approve the CID, we had the CID sales tax that kicks in. So I would say you would, you would start to see, for expectations, I would say near the beginning of next year. There could be people open sooner than that, but I think just for our own expectations, we should talk about early next year, really starting to see a lot of life.
And just for the humans who don't speak acronym, LOI is letter of intent?
Thank you for saying that.
That's okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just a follow-up question. I think I heard you say that this would go for a certain period of time.
The statute allows up to 27 years, but I'm glad you're letting me say it again. If we get reimbursed the exact number, the nine and change with interest, it would shut off. So if it happens before that, great. If it happened, if it wasn't, if we didn't do a very good job and the tenants weren't generating sales tax, the developer would never get paid back the amount they expected. 27 years would hit and it would cut off.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else have other further questions? And so what I'm hearing you say is you're already in discussion with folks of an interest in this, these properties, and you're, so you're pretty confident that you can get much of the space filled?
Very confident.
And, and so in 18 or 24 months?
It looks a ton different, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. Very, very good. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions from the council here? What I have to do, a preliminary or procedural thing here, this is a full public hearing, so anyone in this chamber can actually come forward and speak. So I'm going to call for the full public hearing for three times, and anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? And I see Ms. Haake coming forward, so Ms. Haake, please proceed. And please state your name and address and, and then your position on this particular item.
Okay. Becky Haake, 10516 East 26th Street. Okay. I understand the SIDS, and we understand how they work. Got a few issues with this one. One, this would be the third SID on this property. There is a SID that gives you 18 cents back per square foot of tax money already. It's been on there. There is the 1% sales tax on there now currently, which goes to the event center SID, which covers over there. This would be the most expensive tax district in our city. It's already, it's 9.725. And I have gone around this week, and I have shopped many different places that I don't normally shop. We have arranged from 8.6 to this 9.72. This would put it at 10.72. Nothing is ever said. You have no idea until you walk in a store with your band. It's always kind of amusing now, I look at my receipt going, what a blessing, because you don't know. Nolan Road has three different districts. Who knew? I didn't know. The map's not correct, because the map has our highest tax district at 9.1. So this would be, we're just stacking SIDS on top of SIDS and expecting the customers to pay for it. I kind of think of this as they cross the street at Menards. They give 11% rebate. At 10.72% sales tax, you're only at, almost at that 11-point rebate, just paying your sales tax type thing. And a lot of people think that 11% helps. But also, kind of confused on here, because I read over the presentation and I read over the blight study, and number one, the Jackson County tax number that's written in there is incorrect, because if you pull up that tax number, it comes up blank. One number's off. I drove through there. We have 12 tenants in there right now. And even the old, what was it, Bassett Furniture, I think it was, on the flood end, on the flood zone, it's a Conga Play Center for kids, and it was packed the other day. We have, of course, where Party City and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond went out, of course, that was, that was National Waste Companies that closed all, you know, the stores. That had nothing to do with the center. So I'm kind of torn with this because not only is the blight wrong, I don't see that this is a super blighted area in our area. Stucco doesn't look bad, the parking lot's not perfect, but it's not horrible, there's no potholes. There were plenty of people shopping. This is also where Buffalo Wild Wings are. We all know that, you know, it's busy around, as well as back in the recruiting area, which is well-maintained. The one end is a flood zone, but it's also confusing when you look into this. This HC Independence, which owns, I think you said 2,000 and something square feet, we have another owner that owns almost 800,000 square feet of that shopping center. Where have they been? They've been there since 2007. They have, they have benefited from all these SIDS. You know, we're not hearing anything about that. I just have a lot of questions and a lot of problems with stacking this many SIDS on one property. And who else is going to start stacking SIDS? Where's the limit on the sales tax that we're going to, that we're going to charge? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes Anyone else want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? And that'll be the final call. Okay?
I have one more question.
Please.
Okay. Just for clarity, talked about the event center. That is completely separate in space from this overlay, and just making sure that the CID that included the event center, is it also overlaid on top of this property already?
Yes. She was accurate when she stated that there were multiple CIDs that overlap this particular property. So our take on that is that at some point, if you overlap CIDs for the same purpose with the same funding mechanism on the same property, you could have a concern with whether or not that constitutes tax stacking. In this circumstance, we have different boundaries significantly. The event center CID, as you probably know, is massive and includes many other properties and generators. Its purpose was to fund that particular event center building and also surrounding infrastructure. There was a CID that was put in place a number of years ago over the larger Hartman Development. It imposes a special assessment only, not a sales tax, so it doesn't have a stacking concern. And its purpose was beautification, sidewalks, other public improvements in that general area. So this has a distinct purpose from those other two CIDs, doesn't conflict with at all the special assessment, and has its own boundary and revenue generators that are distinct from those other CIDs.
And when does that other CID expire, the one on the event center?
I, I don't know the date for the event center. Does staff know that off the top of your head?
But it would also be a 27-year...
These, it will be going on for a long time. The overlap will be for quite some time.
Okay.
Councilmember, there is about 10 years left on the event center CID.
10 years? Okay.
Anyone else have other further questions, comments, or concerns? Mr. Martin, if I may ask you a question. So you represent not only the city of Independence, but other municipalities with regards to their bonding and all of those kinds of things, right?
That's correct.
So the question you brought up, which when you started talking about tax stacking, and I hadn't even thought about that until you mentioned it, how often have you seen that, and have you seen any legal opinions that we're not deviating too far here by doing, you know, if we approve this, that we're not deviating too far in that regard?
So the analysis that we undertake is basically what I laid out with respect to boundaries, purpose, type of tax, and revenue generator. This isn't something that firms are typically willing to give a legal opinion on because the result's not guaranteed, it just hasn't been litigated, and in those circumstances, firms are unlikely to take the risk of signing their name on the bottom of a legal opinion. We operate in sort of areas of comfort with what we think the law is and how it would be interpreted, and under that standard, we're comfortable that this is allowable under the CID Act.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Anyone else? Okay. With that, anyone else want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only on this public hearing? If not, I'm going to close this public hearing, and any questions or further discussions on the councilmembers before we proceed to the second or for this public hearing? Anyone else? Any further questions? Please proceed.
I don't have a question, but I just want to explain the why that I'm going to vote yes for this. You know, these are, these are the difficult choices that you have to make as an elected of balancing the needs of regular folks to be able to enjoy and shop in their communities,
but also be able to attract businesses to do that work. I think this is one of those but fours, meaning that but for the ability to get reimbursement. And, and you know, part of the blight is that we've had a lot of break-ins and destruction, and so it's breeding its own damage to the community, independent of whether those are active stores. So for me, this helps increase the movement of people in that area. It reduces the amount of bad behavior that you see when places are well-attended, when there's pokes coming in and out of the parking lots, et cetera. And it does give opportunities for our citizens to be able to shop. And for, you know, seniors, where parking right outside the store and going inside is easy. Going into the mall is hard. So I think that you need a variety of shopping centers. I am thoughtful about putting more than one on top of this with that tenure overlap, but I still think that it is worth it for bringing that area back to life. We have had some serious losses there with those big corporate entities. So for that reason, I'm going to say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Madam City Clerk, please. First reading on 25043, please.
25043, first reading. An ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of Pavilions at Hartman Heritage Community Improvement District, establishing the district, making the findings, and authorizing actions related to the establishment of the district. First reading.
And I'll open the public hearing for the next item. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A full public hearing for a retail selling of beer by the Drink License for Next Level Soccer Training that will be located at 13801 East 42nd Terrace South. Full public hearing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. This application is the retail selling of beer only for next-level soccer training facility. This facility is located on 42nd Terrace, west of Nolan Road. Over the years, this building has seen a number of uses and businesses. Most recently, it was the KC Baseball Academy, which was in there for several years, most recently closing in 2023. This facility's 18,000 square feet. The owner of this business intends to occupy all of that space. And as the facility is being used and individuals are going through and getting the next-level training, parents and those of legal age can purchase beer at this facility. There is one liquor license within 1,000 feet, that being the Casey's, located there at the corner of Nolan Road and 42nd Street. There is residential nearby, which requires city council approval. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. And this is a full public hearing?
Hello, thanks for your time. My name is Garrett Opinno. I'm the owner of Next Level Soccer Training. And, I mean, a little bit about myself, I play soccer. I still play for the Kansas City Comets, the professional indoor soccer team. I've been in the Independence community for about four and a half years. I have my, my facility, it was a smaller facility, Nolan, I mean, US Highway 40, right next to American Best Eye Glasses. I do technical training. I do group training, private training, and then we also run summer camps for the kids. The majority of parents that come in and out, there's for an hour or so. We're trying to bring a little bit more revenue for our business, so we can keep the costs low for the kids. We have found throughout the years, in the four years and a half, that there's a lot of kids in the community of Independence that come to us and play from the racquetball, and they're trying to make that move to, to the next level. I did see about all the houses that are nearby, and then if you look at the, a little bit of the information that I gave you, the nearest, the closest house to our location, which is the near, I mean, the rear of the gym, because we have a fitness center as well there in there, is 297 feet. And then where we're going to be serving the area for the alcohol and everything like that is going to be 361 feet from there. What we're trying to do with this is just create a social environment for the parents where they can use, after a long day of work or stuff like that, they want to get a drink and enjoy watching their kids at training, you know? It's more going to be, it's going to be more of a social event. They come for an hour, they leave, and that's it. We're trying to, and we will have all the signs and the proper signs for our staff members and myself to, to allow beers on the designated areas and not farther from there. We're willing to train and prepare all of our, all of our staff to do the right stuff, and then make sure they know whenever someone is already, get it enough is enough, you know? The experience around my business is most of the families come from, from Independence, Lee Summit, and all the areas in the city. We have people driving from Olata, even Smithville, to train with us just because of that family-oriented environment that we create. Other than that, it's just trying to, to keep the costs low for, for the kids. It was a big move for me, from 30,000 a square foot facility with only 1,400 square foot for the, for the field, to 1,800 a square foot building, and two 505 fields with 3,600 square foot. So what we're trying to do is just basically bring a little bit more for us, so we can keep the costs low. I mean, we did some research around the city and the areas that provides kind of the same service, and we're 30% lower than them, and I would like to keep it like that. I would like to keep it for the community, for the kids, from some of the high schools here around. We have a lot of kids from Truman High School and different schools that come and train with us, and we would like to do that as well, so. Other than that, I'm open for any questions or anything that you guys have with me.
Anyone any questions?
I think I do.
Please proceed.
So I'm looking at your map here of your facility, and there's a seating area in the blue. The blue represents the area that people would be able to partake in. And then, so is that like a raised area, or?
It is a bridge that goes over. So when you enter to the lobby, which is the seating area, you see all the blue, there is a few steps going down. That's the entrance to the field. And then there's stairs going up, and there's kind of like, correct me if I'm wrong, I think most of people call it catwalk or something like that. So it's like a bridge that goes across. All the fields are, we have nets on the fields already and everything like, like that. And then we have like something for the parents just to be safe in that area. But yeah, they don't have any access to the field from that area. So everything is separate, and the only thing for them is just to come down and stuff like that.
Okay. I'm just trying to envision the kids being in that same area.
The enter for the field is downstairs, and that's where all the kids go in, and the catwalk is above.
But there's a cafe as well.
Well, the cafe, yeah, the cafe where you're selling, right now we're selling just packaged stuff right now, so. And pretty much, again, trying to bring for the kids more.
And so those areas would be separated?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
How many staff members do you have currently?
So right now, before getting all the 100% of this, it is around eight.
Okay.
Including coaches, receptionists, and then...
And they're all old enough to sell alcohol, or some of them are at least?
Some of them, some of them will. I mean, it's, right now I have two that might be selling, and then we're going to do all the trainer, the trainings and stuff like that for them. And if we require licensing as well, we'll do it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else other further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
What are your hours of operation?
So right now, during the summer, a lot of kids come from, I think the earliest is 10:00 AM, and we're done with the kids by 8:00 PM. Sometimes it goes to nine on specific days.
And this is just training, training facility, or do you have soccer games there?
No, we don't have any soccer games yet, or anything like that.
Anyone else other further questions, comments, concerns? Okay. The public hearing is still open, so I have to ask three times. Anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only on this item? Does anyone want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only? Does anyone want to speak in favor of? Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address, please.
My name's Elisa Breitenbach. I live at 1110 West Walnut Street, here in Independence, right down the street. And kids here in Independence really don't have any place to play. We no longer have a pool for them to play in. Where are kids supposed to play? I really think it would be awesome to have you here, doing that for our children and my grandchildren. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for informational purposes only?
On board 4209 South River Boulevard, Independence, Missouri. I have two questions. Number one, when does beer and training mix? And second of all, what are the ages of some of these people that are going to be subjected to the bar? And I believe Councilman Fears brought up the age and being able to access that bar. And I think, I think it's looking for problems. I am all for training for the soccer, but I don't think you need to add alcohol to that to make it worth something.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Just for clarity, anybody purchasing alcohol still have to be carded, correct, to have proof of age?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And so I'm just thinking about this, like if I take my kids to Pizza Hut, I have my children. If I have a beer with my pizza, my kids are still with me, but I'm still the responsible parent, and they're going to have to card me to be able to buy alcohol.
Correct.
It seems analogous to that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any councilmembers? Okay, we will close the public hearing then. And then, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Council action is requested on the application received from Next Level Soccer Training LLC for retail selling of beer by the Drink for the Next Level Soccer Training that will be located at 13801 East 42nd Terrace South.
Any further discussion on this public hearing item and this liquor license approval?
I'm just looking at this map, and I'm just wondering, I would just ask, thank, thank you, John. I'm looking at the map, and I'm just wondering, so the cafe is on the other side, and the seating area is by the door. Would that be correct?
Yeah, so the cafe, so the cafe, so you walked in, and then there's a lobby, the seating area, and the cafe is right in front of it. Kids go down, and if you want to get a drink or anything like that, you go upstairs to watch. That's where we have everything.
So I'm just wondering if those two areas, is it feasible for those to be switched? So the cafe's closer to the door, and the seating area, you know, where the alcohol would be, would be?
Based on how the building is set, I mean, the space that we had on this area closer to the door is really limited to it, and that's why we picked that area for it.
Okay, so it's not really, not feasible in that case. Okay. All right, that's, that's all I asked. Thank you.
Anyone else other further questions? Okay. No further discussion. Council action is required here, so Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
No.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And this liquor license is approved six in favor and one opposed. And this brings us to ordinances, and it's 25037. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
If I may, just for a point of clarity and seamlessness, I do have an amendment to bring forward. Would it make more sense to bring it forth now, or after we do the second reading?
I think it's appropriate, Madam City Clerk or Madam Counselor.
Whatever you prefer would be fine.
Yeah, we could read the second reading, and then it's open for amendments at that point. So I think it's appropriate to do the second reading and then open up the floor for amendments. So. But we do have the amendments here, and I'll pass these out for everyone.
25-037, second reading. An ordinance adopting the annual operating and capital budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri, for the fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, estimating the revenues for the fiscal year appropriating sums for the purposes stated in said budget, establishing operating transfers, designating fund balance allocations, establishing the authorized table of organization, and designating those who may make a requisition for encumbrances against the appropriation. Second reading.
Thank you. The floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I make the formal amendment, I want to say a big thank you to city staff and Mr. City Manager and my colleagues here for rustling through that over the past weeks. A big thank you to Melissa and Alex for setting up some, being a part of meetings that we've set up and sat through, and some of them were kind of last minute. So thank you very much for making yourself available to allow, well, just us available to get our questions answered, and also other memberships in our bargaining units, too, to be able to get, become more comfortable with some of the new nuances that are taking place. So big thank you. So the budget amendment that Councilwoman Wiley and myself are bringing forward is the fourth amendment that was just brought forth, just to give it, well, I guess I'll make the motion for, to move this forward for discussion.
Okay, we do have a motion to accept the amendment.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, and...
Thank you.
Please proceed.
So just a quick, high-level view of the amendment that we're looking at here. First, the amendment would eliminate the proposed 400,000 appropriation in the Marijuana Sales Tax Fund for additional dangerous building demolition activities, and would appropriate 400,000 from the unrestricted reserve balance of the general fund to the Community Development Department for the same purpose. Second, the proposed ordinance would strike the appropriation for the homeless outreach coordinator for the Marijuana Sales Tax Fund. This is something that Councilwoman Wiley and myself intend to offer a supplemental appropriation ordinance. Once Governor Kehoe signs the various budget bills into law, and we will certain, certainly will have the $1 million state appropriations secured by Representative Steinmeier for the Arch program. So we will bring that forward as that is appropriated. Thirdly, this budget amendment will replace the funding for two part-time animal dispatchs using the Marijuana Sales Tax Fund. So that is the high-level overview, certainly opening up for discussion.
Thank you, councilmember. Any further discussion on these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I, too, want to thank staff for, for helping me through the budget for the past several weeks and answering questions. I will be voting yes on this amendment. I am really happy that we were able to find the funding for the dangerous building demolition. It's something that my constituents have said is important to them. I think it's important. So I'm happy that we were able to do that. The animal control dispatchers are also very important. We're moving, we're funding those through marijuana tax. I think all of you have heard me talk about the current animal crisis, and these, this is absolutely public safety. These dispatchers are important to that process. They know the animal control officers. And so I'm glad that we were able to fund those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Please proceed.
I know that we've made these changes. I just want to always check with legal to be sure they're comfortable with the animal control dispatchers being taken out of the public safety aspect of the Marijuana Fund.
Yes, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? See, no further discussion on the amendment. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And the amendment passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to the discussion on the entire budget. So any further discussion on the entire budget as it stands?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So two weeks ago, we approved an amendment that I brought forth relative to safety function. And Mr. City Manager, you know, we have received some comments relative to that, and I'm not sure it's clear what our plans are for that. So I just thought, Mr. City Manager, give you an opportunity to say a little more about the plans for that and how that's going to be funded and things of that nature.
Yes, would be happy to, Councilmember Fears and members of the council. So let me just back up and state that I very much appreciate and have benefited from the constant feedback I receive from all of you, both about your goals, but your visions and the strategies you want to achieve in the organization. One of the things that has been brought forward by each of you in the last year is ensuring that some of these, what I call... that some of these, what I call unforced errors, we're containing those growth and those expenses as much as we can, so that funding for things like basic services, we can put more dollars and cents into services, operations, programming, quality of life things for our community and not some of these overhead expenses. So, right now, as I said in our last meeting, we do not have an individual who's waking up and coming to work every day, looking at a citywide perspective for risk management. We have an individual who is housed in Power and Light Department and an individual who's housed in municipal services. Since two thousand and sixteen, we have seen a one hundred and ninety percent increase in our premiums for workers' compensation. You know, kinda a little more context on that. In fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, we had a total of fourteen claims in our organization, citywide. A year later, fiscal year twenty, that number had jumped to fifty-eight. That's a three hundred and fourteen percent increase. In that same time period, we went from two claims in Power and Light to three, but police department went from five to fifteen, Public Works went from six to twenty-one, and Parks and Rec went from zero to six. You know, what we're talking about doing is reallocating budget dollars so that we can house, as a start, these two employees in a central unit, central function, so that they can cross-collaborate, share ideas, share resources for the betterment of the organization. I've had the opportunity through the deputy city manager to speak with the risk manager in Independence Power and Light, who would probably know firsthand what their workload looks like, and they are very excited about this opportunity. And if given, this platform is very confident that their plan and approach that they've implemented in Power and Light can benefit citywide. So the challenge you've given me to lower that increase, that what I frankly believe is not financially sustainable in our premiums, I believe this is an approach, having spoken with the individual who does this day in and day out, that collaborating with that other employee, and as time passes, if we need to grow that to absorb additional workload capacities, we certainly can, we'll look at that, but this is a start towards what we need to do to curtail the growth in those expenditures so we can preserve our limited resources for things that will improve quality of life in Independence.
Appreciate that comment. And just on the funding piece of it, just to help alleviate any concerns that all the funding's gonna come from the utilities, this will be an interdepartmental fund, I mean, it'll be in the finance department, so it'll be called from funds from all over, right?
Right, so we do what's known as cost allocation exercises every year, look at what percentage of an employee's time is spent working with each department, and then those costs are allocated prorated based on the percentage of time spent in each of those departments. So as time is spent, say, with a general fund department or with, you know, maybe employees in the health department who work in animal services, wherever those funds may come from, that's where costs would be allocated to.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that additional explanation, hopefully that answers some questions. And I just also wanna echo what's been said already about the work done by you and your staff, and especially Melissa and Alex, relative to the budget and the work that, the availability that they've had to be available to us to answer lots and lots of questions, is really very much appreciated, and I think we're in a good place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I just wanna reiterate what I stated two weeks ago. I think this is a bad idea, consolidating together. And, Mr., just for the safety aspect of Independence Power and Light, so Mr. City Manager, if you notice that maybe the claims at IPL start going up some, is this something you would have us, are you considering what you're looking at? Are you changing, making a change?
Yes, I think, well, I don't think. We have a responsibility as staff to look at all of our operations daily and monitor those kind of trends, and if we see an issue percolating, then we have to adjust accordingly. So nothing, as far as this plan here, is chiseled in stone. We will adjust, shift resources, time allocation, whatever we need to do to ensure our operations remain viable and safe, so yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else, other further discussion on the budget? Please proceed.
As of the, as of the last report I had, Mayor, we were still experiencing a system reboot due to the city hall power outage that we experienced, so I, as of about three minutes ago, we were still not live. I'll let you know if and when that changes, but we are not, as of, like I said, three minutes ago, live.
Okay. And, City Counselor, what are the requirements, the rules, if we are...
Breaking news, Mayor, we are live.
We're live now? We're good to go? Okay, well, that answers that, and that takes you off the hook, so, very good. So what I might do is, Councilmember McCandless, I know you had a comment right towards the end, I don't know if you wanna kind of paraphrase that so that it in fact shows up in the record, and I don't know, and I know that's putting you on the spot and saying, what did I say then at that moment? So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that's okay, and I would be the same way, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so we have resumed the meeting of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the city council chambers. We had a power outage out here at city hall, which in fact impacted the recording, and so we understand that we are recording this back in working condition, so that puts us live and we're restarting, we're not restarting the meeting from where we started, but we are in fact on the budget discussion, and the discussion is open to the members on the floor, the members of the council, any discussions or other items they wanna discuss, so I am open to the floor, and if you wanna discuss any things at this point regarding the budget.
Thank you. As we discussed at our last meeting, we passed Councilmember Fears' amendment to expand our risk management from just IPL to citywide, and I want to be sure that we are encouraging our Director of IPL to look at both the workload for our current training there, to be sure that that does not suffer as we try to bring this citywide. But also, back to the city manager, as we begin to assess what we can do to look at our injuries, to look at our car wrecks, et cetera, it may be that we find that job is too big for two people and that we have to find a way to fund a third person. I think from overall fiscal health of the city, that, and for the well-being of our employees, I think that may be why, so we will ask you to come back and talk to us about your findings after three months, so that we get feedback from IPL and from the city as to our plans, if that is fair.
Oh, more than, more than fair?
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Would it be possible to have Director Haggen defer come and just give his opinion on the risk management?
Yep, he's still here.
Okay, so Joe Haggen defer, IPL Director, sorry, I was tending to a power outage, as you all know. So I think we're good for right now. So, my opinion, right, so the IPL safety and training coordinator, along with the risk management session, section of IPL, has gained a lot of fruits, as the city manager has stated many times, right? And we have seen growth and we have gained some great safety numbers on the back end that has won us some awards that we haven't seen in a long time. I do think there is fruit in taking that program and extending some of the basic type things to the rest of the city, and I think they can definitely go and help set that up, and we will have to monitor the time spent post-setting that up on the monitoring side of it to make sure that IPL does not suffer from, from losing, and I don't wanna say losing that individual, because there's a lot of discussions that still need to be had on, okay, what percentage of time, how much is he dedicated there, and I'm gonna make sure that he's not missing safety meetings that we continue to have and the discussions and field visits that he does on a continual basis. So in my opinion, he can go absolutely help set up a risk management program for the rest of the city, we just have to be cognizant and continually monitor it. Fair?
Fair, thank you.
Anyone else other discussion? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just to put some more conversation, these discussions have not just taken in a vacuum here with just us, there have had other conversations outside of this membership here with input and feedback and also with the ability to allow us to know if there's anything that has altered drastically with this move, so these decisions aren't created in a vacuum, there's plenty of discussion that goes on that is not seen always behind or up front here, but there's conversations that we have with other individuals that are in this industry. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I just, from an accounting standpoint, you know, on the IPL issue, I just wanna make sure absolutely clear that, that it is accounted for very precisely, because we get criticized enough with regards to IPL money being used elsewhere, and it's just so critically important that we not face that criticism. I have, I have concerns, and with that, I just wanna, you know, that, that's a point of contention with many people, and Councilmember, I am so glad that you brought it up to three months from now, take a look at that, look at the timeframe, how much time they spend on various items, so that we are clear on how it's being spent and from that perspective. So anyone else, other discussions on the budget? Anyone else, other discussion items on the budget? Okay, I just have a final comment on it. I'm gonna vote no on the budget, and the reason I'm gonna vote no on the budget is because of the transportation issues, and I've informed your staff and you of that matter. This isn't a strong no, I'm not going to pound the desk, but the transportation issues have been a big issue for me, and the tilt point was the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for IRIS. When people could go to Kansas City and they can't come back, I recognize that KCPL would pay, or not KCPL, but Kansas City would pay for it, they won't now, and with three hundred and thirty thousand, I realize it's not a ton of money, but I'm just so concerned about transportation, but with that being said, I'll stop and, and that'll be, I just wanna give people an explanation of why I'm voting no. Any further discussion before we pass on? Okay, with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on ordinance zero three seven.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
No, and ordinance zero three seven passes, six in favor, one opposed. And that brings us to ordinance twenty-five zero three eight. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Ordinance twenty-five dash zero three eight, second reading, an ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Santa Fe Trail redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto, second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-five zero three eight? Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just regarding this, termination of this, can you just again review the, what happens when we terminate a TIF and what will happen to the funds and how we're handling that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, so just for everybody's benefit, so we've got same understanding, when a tax increment financing project is approved, whatever taxes are being generated at that site before the project starts are frozen at that moment in time, and all the taxing jurisdictions, the city, the county, the school district, the library, et cetera, will continue to receive that amount, that frozen-in-time amount while the TIF is active. The economic growth that happens then, presumably with the improvements that occur at that site, are what's used to pay down the debt from making those improvements, and then whatever happens first, either the statutory limit expires or the project pays for itself, all the improvements have been paid off, the governing body, the city council, terminates that project, and then that incremental amount that was used to pay for the debt begins to flow to all of the taxing jurisdictions, again, school district, library, county, city, et cetera. What's different about this one, as Councilmember McCandless pointed out earlier, this is one of the TIFs that when it was approved, was done with the full faith and credit of the city backing the bonds. This project did not perform the way it was designed and intended to, so there is still debt remaining even though the statutory authority has expired. The other taxing jurisdictions, less the city, will now receive any incremental growth beyond what was captured or frozen in time when the project was approved. What will happen with the city's funds per previous legislation enacted by the councils, that will go into, for lack of a better term, a reserve account that will then be used over a period of time to serve as the city's mechanism to continue paying down that debt service. So the good news is, we will not require a general fund appropriation to satisfy our city-backed bonds. Bad news is, we're not getting that incremental growth that's occurred to fund those other basic services.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-five zero three eight passes, seven in favor, zero opposed, brings us to twenty-five zero three nine. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five zero three nine, second reading, an ordinance amending Article Five of Chapter Five of the City Code related to solicitors and peddlers, second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? And just for folks watching, Mr. City Manager, I might just have you sum it up in fifteen to thirty seconds, just the basics of what this does.
Yeah, so there's already some restrictions in City Code against some solicitation activities. What this is going to do is provide residents in the community the ability to opt in to mark their property for no solicitation of any kind. So when somebody comes in to get a business license for the solicitation activities, they would then be given a list of the properties that have opted into this and would be prohibited from pursuing those solicitation or peddling activities at those addresses that have opted to not be contacted.
Very good, kinda like a no-call list on phones?
Exactly.
Okay, excellent. Just for people watching, just wanted to have a summary, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else, further discussion? Please proceed.
I always like to clarify that this is for people selling something, people who are campaigning can still knock on a door that says no solicitation, and neighborhoods that have a no solicitation sign, you can still go through and have conversations with the residents, is that correct?
Unless you're coming to my house during a Chiefs game.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's totally legal, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, anyone else, further discussion on twenty-five zero three nine? See, no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-five zero three nine passes, seven in favor, zero opposed, brings us to twenty-five zero four zero. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-five dash zero four zero, second reading, an ordinance approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six annual action plan for the CDBG and home programs, authorizing applications to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing execution of a written agreement and acceptance of CDBG and home program funds, and making the necessary appropriations, second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on twenty-five zero four zero? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were concerned that the federal government might not fund CDBG and home funds this year, it looks as though that that is going to happen, so that's really encouraging for the city. We use these for senior home repair, oh, sorry, wasn't on. I was just saying that we use CDBG funds in partnership with Habitat for Humanity and others, and a big piece of this is for senior home repair, so making it safe for seniors to stay in their homes. Sometimes that's roof repair, sometimes it's plumbing issues, sometimes... sometimes it's making sure that doors and windows close. And I know that I spend a lot of time thinking about homelessness, and this is one of those things where prevention is worth more than the cure. Right now, the two fastest-growing groups of people in homelessness are women with children under the age of five and people over the age of 65. So for us to be able to invest, especially in a community like ours that has a large percentage of seniors, it's really important that we make these investments because it really keeps people safe in their homes while they can still live there. And, and I think it's a prevention approach for us, so it's something I'm very excited about. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have further discussion on 25-040? See no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, 25-040 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-044, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial to District C-2 General Commercial for the property located at 13893 East 35th Street Court South, first reading. 25-045, first reading. An ordinance approving a special-use permit to operate a convenience store without fuel sales at 13893 East 35th Street Court South in Independence, Missouri, first reading. 25-046, first reading. An ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 1550 South Nolan Road in District C-2 PUD General Commercial, planned unit development in Independence, Missouri, first reading.
Thank you, and that brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments relative to last week's audit and, or two weeks ago now, Audit and Finance Committee meeting that, just want to make a couple reports back to the council, the full council. So we did have a review by the city management analyst of the animal shelter program. And that will be, the full report will be forthcoming shortly, as soon as a couple of pieces are finalized. And that'll be available and be provided to the full council. We also, you'll remember, a few weeks ago, we were asked to consider and look at the way the funds were being used in the streets improvement sales tax relative to percentage of funds being used for what I would call overhead. The, the Audit and Finance Committee did look at that, and we agreed with the, the city councilor's statement on how he interpreted those funds being used. We agree with that and, and passed that as well. And then lastly, there was a discussion about spire payments and whether we might need to consider not continuing to make, to allow spire payments to be made at the utility center. The staff is doing some additional work on that, but currently, we are essentially supplementing that ability to do that by about $11,000 a year. And so there's a real question as to whether we should supplement that just so people can make payments there when they already have the opportunity to make those same payments a number of places around the city, at grocery stores and other places. So we're just, we'll be getting another look at that here in another month or two, but we'll take another look. Just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaught?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing. I'm sure a lot of you have seen in the news recently that Independence Tower Tenant Union came to an agreement last week with Mr. Ponizan from Dynasty Properties. All current residents will receive new leases, and major repairs will be completed by November of this year. This is really, really good news for the tenants, and I think a really positive step by the new ownership group. And I'm feeling really positive about it, and I wanted to congratulate everyone. Thanks.
Well done, thank you. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you've heard us talk about the governance for our utilities. We've had multiple studies, we've had study sessions, we've talked about this a lot. But I just want to be sure that people are hearing that we are examining how the governance of the business side of our utilities is being directed. It would still report up to the City Council for important budgetary decisions and large investments and rates. But the day-to-day would have a board that could help make the decisions for them and help with the long-term strategic planning. So as we have been wrestling through this, we met today as a full council. It was publicly noticed meeting. Some citizens came to listen to the discussion. I just want people to know that this conversation is happening, that we will be eventually bringing forward more information to you in an additional study session. But I don't think you can hear this enough, that we are working through the recommendations of DKMT for a highly functioning utility. So just that for starters. We want to welcome Valerie Burns, who is new CEO of The Chamber. And she will be arriving in Independence in a couple of weeks. And I'm sure that we will make her feel welcome and continue to work with her for additional economic development. Community Services League received the Regional Leadership Award at Mid-America Regional Council. So they were recognized out of nine counties as one of the great organizations doing work in the community. We had a strawberry festival. I hope some of you got to go before. We had a huge rain out. I know you were there having ice cream and strawberries. And then my last item is just, Big Brothers and Big Sisters is really looking for matches here in Independence. So if you think you have some time and attention that you could share with a young man or woman who is looking for that kind of connection, please connect with me. I'll be happy to give you the information. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, to the city manager. Tonight, we were talking about GEO bond and conversation and discussion there, which jogged my memory. The public safety sales tax, I believe that has a sunset on it. Do you recall what that, that is?
Yes, sir. That is December 31st of 2028, so just a little over three years remaining.
Okay, so we certainly need to get on future radars, of course, of, of things to come.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, update, earlier, I mentioned that the Independence Event Center CID termination date. Want to clarify, that is, in fact, 2042, 2042. So I said 2035, the correct year is 2042, 2042.
Very good, thank you.
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? If nothing else, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.